It is 6:01, we will call the meeting to order. All board members are present. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, we would look for a motion in a second to approve the truth in taxation agenda only.
Okay, just the truth, okay.
Yep, we'll adjourn and recommitment for the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the truth in taxation meeting.
Okay, motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is the truth in taxation presentation, so we will turn that over to business manager, Millory.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school board meeting tonight on December 20th. So we're gonna get started here with the truth in taxation meeting. Just to kind of give you a heads up, we're gonna review the 2023 budget at an extremely high level, and then we'll dive a little bit into that levy so you can see it. And at the end, we will open up for public comment, so anybody can. At the end, we'll open up for public comment and allow anybody to be able to ask any questions that they feel that they need to. And then we will bring it back to the board, who at that point in time will need to actually approve the specific dollar amount in the levy, which will be on the screen, so you can read it from the screen to make that easy. All right. So, just to review the levy process for everybody, the board has certified the tax levy at its maximum limit on September 20th of this year. So back in September, I came and presented the initial tax levy to you all, and we certified it at the maximum level. Districts are allowed to certify at the maximum level and while MDE continues to finalize their calculations. So you'll see as we move forward through this presentation that there was a change in the dollar amount from the first time you saw it to now, because there was a change in between that time of when we certified maximum to when they finalized the numbers. We have a truth in taxation hearing tonight, and then we also have to adopt the final levy and have it submitted to the state by December 28th. Some things to think about when we're doing our truth in taxation. We do hold it as a public meeting. It is a public meeting. We do have to bring it forward to the public so they have the opportunity to ask questions and us to be able to answer them. In general terms, this is, again, a public meeting. The information discussed during this meeting is has already been reviewed by the school board at one point in time throughout this last year. So we've talked about the 2023 budget, which was approved. We've also already seen the levy at one point in time. We're just finalizing it today. Law does require, however, that we still come forward to the public and give them one more opportunity to have that conversation after they've received their tax statements. Tonight, like I'd said earlier, we're gonna talk about the 2022-2023 budget very broadly. This budget was approved on May 17th of 2022. For those who wish to learn more about that budget, if they didn't have that opportunity, please feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email, and we'll set up a meeting to have those discussions. Some of the items on the list here, as I had said, reviewing the current budget, discussion of the proposed levy. The meeting does have to be held after 6:00 PM, which is why we started at 6:01 today. It can be during a regularly scheduled meeting, which is what we're having today. And again, all people must be allowed to provide input. So let's move on to the first topic of discussion. Some points to remember as we go through this. Revenue is set by state legislature except for voter-approved referendums. So items like your pool were a voter-approved referendum. They are included in the voter-approved numbers when we look at those a little bit. The local and state aid mix are set by state legislature, and an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenue to the school district. We are different than other organizations or other government entities. We are not allowed to set the dollar amount that we get. It is a legislature formula thing that we have to work through. And it doesn't matter if it's local or state. It is still guided by legislature. So, we will talk about our 2022-23 budget. As I had said earlier, the preliminary budget was adopted on May 17th of 2022. We will be going through some formal budget updates here in March, April of 2023 to revise that budget, just as we had this year or this previous spring for the board meeting. The budget is a living, breathing document, and it changes regularly as new information comes forward. So if the state provides some new inputs, we try to incorporate that information in our revised budget. We do pay attention to the budget as the year begins, and we continue to watch it throughout the year. I've even been working on some additional reporting that we can use to help guide us through that process as well. But tonight, let's just discuss the preliminary budget that was already approved at that high level, as mentioned before. So on the screen, I'm sorry for those of you who are behind me. On the screen, this is the expenditures for the 2023 expenditure budget. So there are eight separate funds presented on the screen right now with a total expenditure budget of $5,097,081. This slide shows it in percentages. So our biggest fund that we have is the general fund, which that's the fund that educates the students in our district, and that makes up 84% of our budget. So it is that largest budget. And we will focus the majority of our time on the general fund tonight.
Kristi, can you repeat that $5 million number again real quick?
So, the general fund is used for a majority of the operations within the district. As I said, it's 84% of our budget. It includes instruction, both the general and special education instruction, administration, the media center, which is where we are sitting tonight, transportation, maintenance costs, and counseling and nursing. It's sometimes easier to talk about what's not covered in the general budget, because everything seems to be covered in the general budget. The things excluded from our general budget are school nutrition, so the meals that our students eat, community education, which also includes our SAC program and our daycare program that we offer, our long-term debt, principal and interest. Those are separate accounts, as well as our scholarship fund that is not maintained in our general fund. Looking at this slide, we're looking at the general fund revenues. So this is how the revenue is broken apart based on our current budget. So as you can see, for general fund, about 69% of our budget comes from state aids. That dollar amount is $2,972 million. The next largest component is levies, which is 16% of our budget, which is about $701,000. After that, then, it's federal aids at $514,000 or 11.9%. And then to wrap it up with local revenues of 3% or $131,000. But as you can see, our state aids are our biggest, followed by our levies. So they are the two biggest components of our revenues coming in. So now, looking at our expenditures, now broken out by program, we can see kind of where all of our money is going. So as you can see, the biggest piece of the pie is instruction at 67%. Instruction is made up of general education, vocational education, which would be our ag department, and then special education as well. Now, compared to last year, we are at 65% for our general instruction budget. This year, we're at 67. A next category that directly impacts children is our support category, which is the blue, which is 10% of our current budget. It includes instructional supports, which is the technology support, the media center, and any staff development that we have to provide to our teachers and staff that are working with children. Pupil support, which is our counseling services, our health services, and transportation. Now, this budget last year was 13% of the total budget, but some of those expenses were moved into general education, into that instructional education budget from last year to this year, which is why we see a decrease to 10%. The next item that I'll talk about is sites and buildings, which is 9% of the budget this year. And that includes salaries and benefits for all of the maintenance staff that we have on site, along with utilities, snow removal, general repairs and upkeep on the buildings, and then also our capital and LTFM funding projects. So LTFM does run through that budget as well. Last year, this was about an 8% of our budget. This year, we can see a little bit of an uptick of that, of 9%. And then finally, the last portion, administration, makes up 14% of our budget. Administration is made up of the school board stipends, legal fees, superintendence, principal and clerical support, admin support for technology. Excuse me, business office, our liability insurance, our workers' comp insurance, our annual audit fees, and district memberships. So there's a lot of things that fall into that administrative bucket that impact all employees of the district, but it's easier to keep it in one high-level bucket than try to allocate it out throughout the entire organization. We were also at 14% last year of our budget, so it stayed pretty steady, which is good, and we're gonna continue to monitor that as well. Now that we've reviewed last year's budget or this year's budget at a high level, we're gonna look at the tax levy. So we are talking about the 22-pay-23 tax levy, which is approximately or it is a total of $1.2 million. Be specific, $1,260,514. Of that, the voter-approved portion is $676,000, and the other levies is $584,000. This is an increase over last year of $234,000 or 22.81 as compared to the prior-year levy. Now, as I had said earlier tonight, that there was a change from the preliminary budget that you all approved at the maximum, and that was a change by $48,000, which the difference is tied to our lease levy, which is in the support of the SMUC building that all of us utilize for our special education students. Some items to note on the voter-approved. It is calculated using a formula based, again, as I said, off of legislature. So it's $460 times the anticipated 2024 adjusted pupil units, plus or minus any adjustments that the states feel that they need to take. Then it is also $1,992.54 times that anticipated 2024 pupil units. So again, there could be any adjustments based on whatever legislation feels that needs to be adjusted at that point in time. The other bucket, the $584,000, excuse me, that is in OPEB debt services is in there. Community ed, which is guided by statute, is in there. Our capital, deferred maintenance, health and safety, LTFM projects are in there. The lease levy, safe schools, career, and technical are all made, all make up that $584,000. Excuse me. Looking at the levy changes. So if we were to compare last year to this year, the general fund increased by 25.9% or $212,350. Our community ed fund decreased by 1.25% or $1,633. And our OPEB debt services increased by 30.87 or 23.387 or 382, my apologies. The changes in the voter-approved referendum or changes in the general fund are directly related to those fluctuations in enrollment and any legislature changes that may have happened in the last year. Community ed decrease, that is because they use the calculation of the 2021 actual expenditures less the limit of $9,500. So it is one of the formulas that we have. If you're at all interested in some sleeping material, we can always pull up the 39-page levy document, and you can try to follow it, because it's really not fun. So, looking at these revenues just a little bit differently now in a pie chart by fund. These are the three funds. We have general fund, community ed, and OPEB debt service. As you can see, the general fund is made up of it's 82% or $1,032,365.75. The community ed is 10% And the OPEB debt services is 8% or $99,121.66.
Can I ask you to go back? Can you go back? Okay, go back one more. Okay. Say again what the general fund increase that was based on state decisions?
It's based on the general fluctuation in enrollment.
Okay.
And then also on any legislative decisions that were made.
So like, we have increased our general fund by that amount?
We have increased the general revenues that we'll receive from our levy.
Okay.
By that amount.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So at this time, we will open it up to public input. So anybody who has any public input in relation to the levy will open the floor to you so that you can ask any questions that you feel you wish to ask at this time. If there are no questions, then we will move back. We will come back to the board table, and we will ask the school board to take formal action to certify the 22-pay-23 levy to meet the month-end deadline of the amount of $1,260, And yes, you do actually have to say the dollar amount in the approval.
In the motion.
Yep.
Kristi, do you have any idea, just off the top of your head, what the total revenues will be coming in for the 22-23 year?
Off the top of my head?
Yeah.
Combined together?
No.
Not off the top of my head. Because the levy, this levy, isn't for the 23 school, isn't for the 22-23 school year. It's for the 24 school year. Yep.
I was wondering how we were setting for this year?
At this point in time, I couldn't answer that question off the top of my head. I apologize.
22 payable 2023. That is, that is next school year?
It is for next school year. So what that means is the people are being assessed. So the community is being assessed in '22.
Okay.
They pay their taxes in 2023. So when you make your May payment, when property taxes are due in May, that's actually for the '24 school year.
Gotcha.
And then the November, obviously, the '24 school year. It doesn't line up with the school calendar very well.
Right, yeah.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Don't have any public questions? So if not, we'd look for a motion?
I move we approve the levy for $1,260,514.24.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave.
I will second that.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will also look for adjournment for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Does anybody want a quick break before we call the regular meeting to order? Nope? Okay, check the time. All right, it is 6:19. We will call the regular meeting to order. All board members are present. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yeah. I, well, just the minutes. I'd like to talk about some of the minutes and how, uh, let's see. Yeah, let's just, can we move like the, uh, September, October, November, regular meetings down to discussion, action, I guess?
Okay, so we're gonna pull September 20th, item A. October 18th, item B. November 15th, item E. We will pull those down, and they will become 17D. It'll be called regular meeting minute discussion.
And then, can we add E? I'd like to talk about the, um, our board bills, what we're seeing here. And there's a few things that we're not seeing in the last few months.
Okay, so 17E will be board bills? Do you need to have those pulled from the consent agenda?
Um, no, because they're not actually in our board bills.
Okay. Okay, so 17E will be board bills discussion?
And then, can we add under recognition and good things happening?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to add, Teresa Frazier and Deb Rayburn made the MSBA honor roll for the director's award, which takes 100 or more hours, points of attendance for training programs within four years. So I just wanted to throw that under recognition and good things happening.
Director's service.
I mean, however you want to label it, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know what you say it.
Thanks. Director's service award.
Teresa did it in four years. Deb did it in two, so.
Overachiever.
I haven't done it in 10.
Okay, do we have any other changes to the agenda?
So I would like to add a follow-up discussion on scoreboard, this purchase of the scoreboard.
Okay, so we can make that 17F.
And then, I would like to take the treasures report out of the consent agenda just because I want to ask some questions.
Okay.
I'm not having any complaints. I just want some questions. I want to take it out of there so we can discuss it.
Okay, so we will remove 16I2 and make that 17G. And then I would also, I'd like to add 17H, a TRC update. Okay, I think I got them all. Is there anything else anybody would like to add or change? Okay, if not, we would look for a motion and a second to approve the changes.
Make a motion to approve the changes in the agenda?
Okay, motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we'll look for the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, public input. I'm guessing we're still at nobody. Okay. Next, onto recognition. Happy holidays to the staff, students, and community members. And our new one is Teresa, or myself, and Deb received the director's service award from MSBA for completing training. Next, we have the audit presentation, so I will turn it over to Smith Schaefer.
So, there's hard copies too, if you guys find that easier to follow along or up here too. But I'm Kaylee Lentz from Smith Schaefer. We met with Jen, Kristi, and Teresa earlier to go over the financial statements in greater detail. Jen is gonna present the PowerPoint, a more summarized version. But Kristi passed around those hard copies too, if anybody does want to see the information in greater detail. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That means we feel that the financial statements are fairly stated. It also means we didn't have any issues with the audit. Minnesota legal compliance. We test various areas, like collateral held at the bank, bids throughout the year, and the letters that we send all the board members to disclose to us if they have any conflicts of interest. There were no exceptions noted for that compliance testing. Internal control letter, there were no comments for that. And student activity compliance, there were no issues or exceptions with those either. And the audit committee letter was also passed around as well. Nothing to add there. Average daily membership, or ADMs, this is what drives your district's funding. It remains steady over the last several years at about 265. We did see a decrease of 24 ADMs from 2021 to 2022, leaving you at 240 at the end of 2022. With the decrease in ADMs, we'd expect to see a decrease in revenues. We'll take a look at on the next slide. Overall revenues were $4.8 million, which did increase from last year, which, if you remember from last year, we wrote off the UNESCO payable that was $300,000. That came through as a negative adjustment to your LTFM aid. So if you back that off, you actually did decrease revenues by about $85,000, which you'd expect due to the decrease in ADMs. So the property tax category there did increase, now because last year's of that negative LTFM was going through there. State aids increased. Your general education aid decreased with a decrease in ADMs, but special education aid increased from last year to this year. And federal aids were down this year. That's more so due to timing, your COVID money. With supply chain issues, you weren't able to make the purchases that you planned on. So we'd expect to see the federal revenues related to that increasing next year, although you did have the food service, your higher reimbursement rate all year, as well as the free lunch. So that's falling into the federal program revenues this year too. Other is anything that doesn't fall into those three categories. So your community service fees, your cardinal care, donations, investment income, anything like that, that falls into your other category. So with less COVID restrictions, your student fees, athletic fees, different things that require participation, all those increased in 2022 compared to 2021. Next slide's your revenues in a pie graph format. This just shows the mix change just slightly. You see the property tax percentage went up this year, and now that is due to that negative LTFM last year. But again, the most significant aids coming in from the state. And you can really see the UNESCO here, because in 2021, that large decrease, that is that negative amount. 2022, that was $846,000. And then in 2023, next year, your levy is gonna be back up to just over a million dollars, which is more comparable to where you were in 2020 before those adjustments occurred. Expenditures, this category shows all of your expenditure categories across the bottom in a year-by-year comparison. 2022 shown in that bright blue there on the far right in each category. Overall expenses were $5.4 million in 2022 compared to $4.5 million last year again with your, I should have mentioned this on the previous slide, but the UNESCO decrease in revenue, you also saw it offsetting decrease in expenses. So you didn't change your bottom line at all, just getting that off the books. But that's why, that's part of the reason why your expenses were lower last year. Administration. The first category there, administration, up slightly with salaries, support services. You had some increase in your insurance by about $59,000, and then some unemployment salary costs in the support service category. Regular instruction up this year.[1661.64] Regular instruction, up, up this year, that's increased in salaries. If you note, the increase starting in 2019, this is when you started to pay rice bill for their students, so you have an increase in the expenses, but you also saw increase in revenue related to reporting those students. So it's just a different way of reporting it, starting in 2019, you didn't have this huge increase, it was just a difference in how, how those students were being accounted for. Vocational instruction, thirteen-thousand-dollar increase in ag teacher, special ed can vary year-to-year, your community ed, salaries and supplies went up, but you also had an offsetting revenue received for preschool grant money that came in. Pupil support, this year food costs were up, you had more participation, more revenue with that, but with the free lunch, you see greater participation, so your costs were up for more food, plus some kitchen equipment that was purchased. Sites and buildings can vary year-to-year with any projects you have going on. If you see, this is where your UNESCO write-off was, because if you see that bar in 2021, that's quite a bit lower, that's that three-hundred-thousand dollars hitting there. This year you had LTFM projects, pool repairs, things of that nature. And then the fiscal and other, that's your bond payments, your OPEB bond payments. You can see when they lowered down in 2019, that's when you paid off your other bond, and you just have the one, the one OPEB bond left. General fund activities, revenues in that light blue and expenditures in the gold. General fund operated at deficit this year of five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. So those expenses increased from last year, like I said, that three-hundred-thousand dollars write-off was last year, and this year you had those LTFM repairs, increase in salary costs, and some increased student activity expenses. We can see, you take a look at it on the, your revenues were also up a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars compared to last year too. On the next slide, we can take a look at what that affected for the fund balance. So part of that deficit spending was spending your LTFM restricted dollars in the gold there, you do see that that went down about ninety-thousand dollars. Now even after, you know, you can't spend a deficit year after year at that rate, but even with that last year, you still have a good-sized fund balance to end at 2022. Food service fund activities, the goal, the food service fund is typically just to break even. Twenty-twenty-two, you see the deficit, that's when we had the expenses in the one year, and you see the increase in 2021 there, when you had the revenues coming in. So the one-year decrease and the other, they kind of offset each other. Current year, the food service operated at a surplus of twenty-three-thousand dollars, like I mentioned with the higher reimbursement rate during the year. So the next slide here, the food service fund balance at a hundred-and-three-thousand dollars to end the year. You have the reserve in the food service fund for any capital needs that you might have in the future. I'm thinking you're going to have to have a plan to spend some of that down, they only let you have a certain amount in the food service fund. Community service fund, operated at a slight deficit of five-thousand dollars this year, there just, expenses were increased for salaries and supplies. Also, there was offsetting revenue that was increased from last year with that preschool grant to offset some of those costs. You can see the fund balance coming down just a little bit in the community service fund, ending at about a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars at the end of the year. And community service, that's your ECFE, cardinal care, preschool, any of the community ed programs are running through this fund. Debt service fund, this is just your OPEB bond, you can see in 2019, when it came down, that's when you, you paid off the one bond, and now you're just down to the other bond. Revenues coming in here are being used to pay your bond principal and interest costs. The debt service levy was decreased by about fifty-thousand dollars this year, bringing down, those bonds were paid off in 2027, so fund balance came down to fifty-two-thousand dollars this year, ending at twenty-six-thousand dollars at the end of the year. Your scholarship fund continues, fund balance continues to build, about a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars at the end of 2022. This is money available to award students. Forty-five-thousand dollars was paid out in 2022, so you have quite an impressive scholarship fund for students here at your district. The next few slides are, shows cost per ADM. This first one here, well, in the orange here, twenty-twenty-two, that's your district's numbers comparing to the blue and the yellow. The blue is districts of comparable size, which zero to four-hundred-and-ninety-nine's quite a bit big range when you fall at two-hundred-and-forty, which is probably on the lower end of the comparison chart, and then the state average in yellow. I'll point out too, that those numbers are 2021, because that's the most recent information that they have available to us. So with different COVID costs and things, trying to compare 2022 to 2021 is probably, you know, there can be differences there too. But this first chart is district and school administration and support services costs. So expenses in these two categories increased fifty-eight thousand from last year, but some of that was your insurance increasing and that unemployment expenses this year. Combining that with your decrease in twenty-four ADMs, that's why it's increased from last year. So regardless of how many students you have, it still takes a certain amount of administration to operate and run your district. So it's, it is a little hard to compare when you're, when you're looking at it that way. Regular instruction cost per ADM, spent two-point-two million dollars in regular instruction in 2022. Increases in salaries and benefits mainly, some increases in student activity expenses as well, this is, those things run through here. So if you have a band trip, music trip like you had in 2021, that's all affecting here. So comparing from other districts in the state, things can be skewed if they have a trip or they have something big going on that's run through there that another district doesn't have. But you spend your money somewhere, you want to spend it on regular instruction, it means you're spending it on the students. So if you're going to be higher in another area when you're comparing, it's a good place to be higher. Next slide, general fund, your total general funds, your only year general fund cost. General fund expenses increased seven-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand from the prior year, and again, last year that was that three-hundred-thousand dollars from UNESCO, so that's really four-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand instead of that seven-seven, but that's how that is recorded. But you had LTFM repairs, pool repairs, and salary increases this year. So you are, yes, coming in a little higher, but again, comparing to the 2021 numbers is probably more a realistic number. To summarize, general fund expenditures exceeded revenues by five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars and ended with a fund balance of one-point-five million dollars. Your unassigned general fund balance of one-point-one million is twenty-four-point-two percent of your general fund expenditures. Your policy currently is to be at about, at least thirty percent, which we are at twenty-four percent. So that doesn't mean that you can't revise that policy, or, you know, this could just be a one-off year with that too, depending on how, I don't know what your budget's set at for next year, just something to look at. Food service fund revenues exceeded expenditures by twenty-three-thousand dollars and ended with a balance of a hundred-and-three-thousand. Community service fund expenditures exceeded revenues by five-thousand and ended with a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars. And OPEB debt service fund ended with a balance of twenty-six-thousand dollars. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, it might be for Jen or Christie maybe. So when I look back at the expenditures, all funds graph, and how regular instruction went up by quite a bit. So last year was the first year we had the student services key, right? So is that accounted for in regular instruction or somewhere else? I assume it's regular instruction.
We do have that included in regular instruction.
Okay. Okay, that's just a question.
All right, thank you very much. Great working with you, Christie and Jen and Jen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's a lot of money. It's a lot.
When we approved the original budget, we had talked about having a spend down, I don't remember the number being five-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
That's what we, that's what we spent last year, yes. So when we talked about it a month ago, four weeks ago, that's what the audit came up with, and that's where we ended the year. After we cleaned every, because the whole, the whole process with audit is, you get the year done, and then there's a whole bunch of cleanup that has to happen, right? So after all the cleanup was done, that's where we ended the year. But it hasn't changed since last, since four weeks ago. Because the only thing that changed was management report, otherwise everything else is the same.
So what we're, what we're looking at for the new budget is, we cannot, we have to not spend down, I mean, we have to, we have to stay.
The current budget is at a deficit of twenty-eight-thousand, I want to say, but we'll be revising that, we'll be working on those revisions starting after the new year, and we'll be reevaluating.
Wait, the current budget is what?
It's set at a deficit of twenty-eight-thousand.
Okay.
It's minimal.
All right.
But we will be looking at the, revising those numbers in the new year.
Okay.
What kind of way, we wanted to get the audit done.
Right.
Truth in taxation done.
Right.
And then start next month as soon as everything is back in session.
Right. Okay.
Did we spend all of our ESTER dollars? The ones that, did we get everything spent for the ones that expired at the end of September?
Yes.
How much was that again?
It wasn't much, it was somewhere around, I think, thirteen to fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't a lot of money, because what, the problem was, is what we hadn't budgeted for was the school, us, or the van, and the van kept getting extended, it kept getting pushed out. So we finally purchased the van October.
Okay.
I want to say, and so that was the bulk of the budget, so, but in order to spend those monies down, we had to like, figure out, okay, well, what are we going to put in its place, right? Because those monies had to be obligated by September thirtieth.
Yeah.
And had to be requested from the state by November fifteenth.
Okay.
And so as soon as we knew what they were for, we, everything was obligated prior to September one, we just had to figure out what they were. We revised our budget and then drew down the funds in October.
So do we have more of that ESTER money?
We do have a significant amount of ESTER money at this point in time, which.
Where, where does that show up?
That's federal money, so that would show up in the budget.
You'll see it next year's audit.
Yes. You'll see an increase in the federal spending at next year's audit. And we are utilizing that money, again, we used it to buy the new van that we needed to purchase, because we did have to cycle out of the van. We're looking at some furniture, because there's a lot of outdated furniture for our students, and students don't learn when they're uncomfortable, so we want to make sure that they, they have proper seating. We're looking at some other educational aids that would help those students as well. Jen and I are having a conversation about learning loss, and.
Learning loss.
Learning loss, and how to address.
Looking at test scores.
Yeah, and how to.
Assessment data.
What other instruments or items could be incorporated to be able to assist with that learning loss? And we're, we're kind of going down that path, but it takes time, because we want to be wise with those dollars, and we want to spend them appropriately. So the next batch of money, which is ESTER two, has to be obligated by September thirtieth of 2023, and spent by November fifteenth of 2023. And then the last batch, which is the ESTER three, which came with the learning loss requirement component, those have to be obligated by September thirtieth of 2024, and spent by November fifteenth of 2024.
Okay. Can we go back to the expenditure all, page seven? You know, we had that big increase of sites, building, and equipment, what, I mean, I know we did like the LED project, but that came out of LTFM, and that was only split half and half.
Well, an LTFM project, that, that LED project, you paid until.
Exactly, this year. Correct. So what were the big giant increases in that one for expenditures?
I'm going to pull it up on the screen, so.
Okay.
Is this the, maybe, is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have to remember, so this is all funds, so this includes pool, so.
So what?
This includes pool.
Okay.
So includes all of the funds, so you have to remember, we had a spa filter go out.
But all that got charged under the pool.
This is all funds.
But what I'm asking is, is if it was the pool spa filter that was done, that was charged to the pool, that didn't come out of LTFM capital, that came out of the pool fund?
It did come out of LTFM because of the price tag, the pool couldn't cover it. But there was another filter that came out of the pool fund. So there was multiple pieces of, there were several things that had to be replaced in the pool.
So how much of that is from the pool then? Out of the, not from the pool fund, from the capital fund or LTFM fund? How much of it was pool, do you know?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
So can you email us that question?
Yeah, if you email it to me, I'll get you the response, because it digging into it could take longer, just because of internet connectivity.
So, so, I just had a quick question in my head about the, so when we levied, we levied to run the pool, you know, separately from that bin. So if we take something out of, say, LTFM for the pool to get fixed, do we reimburse that from the pool, let, no?
So the LTFM, the LTFM fund is almost kind of self-regulating, because what ends up happening is, is in two years, we'll recoup whatever we overspent in the LTFM plan.
Right.
Okay? So when we looked at the dollars of the items that had to be replaced in the pool, we also had to be conscious of the budget of the pool as well, because we knew that there's more maintenance that has to come. Like, we had a chair that had to be replaced, that happened, I think, this year, the months are rolling together, but we had that happen. There were salary increases that had to happen as well, right? Those start on January one, the staff are starting to become adults now, which means their increase is tied to adult minimum wage requirements, those types of things. So we had to take all of that into consideration when we evaluated all the expenditures going into that pool budget, to ensure that we, we don't want to deficit, deficit spend the pool budget, because we want to make sure that the pool continues to.
Right.
To be supported, right?
Right.
So the items that could be brought into LTFM because they were bigger, the spa filter being one of them, it was very expensive, because there was some plumbing, other, some other plumbing items that had to end up going with it once they got in there and started looking at it. We moved that into the LTFM plan, knowing that in two years, we're going to recoup it. Because at the end of the day, when MDE looks at the pool, they see general fund. It's all still general fund at the state.
And the only reason I asked the question, Christie, is just because when that pool came, the pool issue came up, and it was a separate vote for the taxpayers, you know, we had the theory behind it that we were going to set it higher than what we needed so that we'd have some reserve, and that's why they saw that separate tax piece on their property taxes. So I'm, I'm asking just because I don't want to word that the same, if somebody asks, well, okay, so you're taxless for this, and you're using that money to fix the pool, right? Well, if I say yes, I'm a liar.
But we are, I mean, we are, we are using it, we don't spend that money on anything but.
Right, right.
It's just, we have to be cognizant of what the pool's budget actually is, and so the downfall of the pool, the downfall of the pool is it isn't a moneymaker in any way, shape, or form.
No.
You lose money on pools, right?
Yeah.
So we want to be very aware of how we're spending those dollars, and we want to make sure that they go to the most appropriate place. There is definitely more maintenance that has to happen on the pool.
Right.
Now, I personally have never been in that space, but I know there's more maintenance that has to happen, and so we want to make sure that the monies are there to be able to support those upcoming maintenance, because unfortunately, this year, we just happen to have multiple things happen to the pool.
You can't predict that, right.
And so we had to.
And that's the other reason I ask, because when it comes due again, for the community to vote on it, you know, whoever's on the board, you know, border in the school, or, I mean, do we need to look at leaving it or increasing it? I mean, you know, what, I mean, we all know that there's other things that need to be fixed, but, yeah, that's, that's why I ask, I guess.
Yep, and we'll continue to evaluate the pool. I mean, again, it's, it's an important piece of the community, and we want to continue to support the community. Like, we all know it's an important piece of the community, it is something that the students of Leroy Ostrander get to experience, and a lot of other schools don't. Kids have swim lessons, right? There's a lot of places and a lot of communities that don't have that opportunity to have it physically in their school. So it's great, so we want to make sure that we maintain it, and we just have to watch it, and so I'm hopeful that, and Jen knows this, I've been working on some like new reporting and what it's going to look like and stuff, because I, I personally don't feel that the reporting that you receive on a monthly basis is appropriate to make decisions. And so I've been like fiddling around and looking at other districts' reports and seeing what, what would be beneficial, what won't be beneficial, how are we going to be able to help you all make the best decisions for your organization?
Even before, before we were discussing the pool, we, we know it's going to probably cost something if it doesn't pass, and it's not, we know that's going to cost the district something, probably a lot more than one thing's. So it's half a dozen one, half a dozen the other, but it was just a very, you know, the pool referendum levy passed by two votes, so it's just, yeah.
You're very cautious with it.
Yeah.
And that makes sense, so we want to, and we want to be cautious with those dollars. We want to make sure that it's appropriate.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Excuse me.
Might be jumping ahead, but the ADM that dropped twenty-four.
So here is the downfall with ADM. ADM is based on the number of days in which the student is in school.
Yep.
It's not the number of kids that attend your school. So the number of kids that attend our school stayed relatively flat. The unfortunate thing is the number of days in which they attended school, not so much. So that's why we're seeing that fluctuation. And it can be anything, like, you can have a kid who comes to school every single day, they're a one-point-oh ADM. You could have a kid who misses five days, and now it's ninety-seven percent. So you get point-nine-seven of their revenue, not one-point-oh of their revenue. If a kid doesn't attend school for fifteen days, they're automatically unenrolled from the school. That is a state guideline. And so anything, any of those missing dates, and it has to be fifteen days consecutive, doesn't mean they don't miss fifteen days of the school year. So those are all weighted, and, and we watch them, we do watch them, but we do base a lot of our calculations on how many kids do we have in the seats, anticipating that we will get close to one-point-oh, we know it's not going to be complete, but close to one-point-oh. The downfall is, is 2022, we are still coming off COVID, right? So there was a lot of illness, for someone who doesn't like to be around illness particularly, there was a lot of illness this last year still, early in the school year. Not better as the school year progressed, but there was still a lot of stuff going on in that first half of the school year. And anytime those kids miss school, it's an impact on our, on our bottom line, which is a downfall. Some kids are by the hour, but most are by the day.
In the big audit on page nine, it says, you know, districts had declining enrollment since oh-seven, you know, enrollment trends show the numbers, you know, will remain relatively flat for the next few years. Are you guys guessing it's going to stay flat with the two-forty? Or are they guessing it's going to stay flat with like the two-sixties wherever you've been hanging?
I'm anticipating it'll most likely come back up to closer to the two-sixties range.
I think we even had a meeting, we even thought the two-fifty range.
Yeah.
It's a kind of in-between, better than predicted.
We're looking at the, so the official numbers for ADMs for last year came in in October.
Okay.
In October as well, is also the first count of students being submitted to the state.
First what?
The first count of the total number of students enrolled in the district for, for your school district, and so reported from the state. And we watch those numbers, like, I pull enrollment reports every single month to see where are we fluctuating, are we losing kids, are we gaining kids, are we, whatever? And we are staying relatively flat, so now it's just how long are they in school? If we have a kid who starts halfway through the year, we're. So now it's just how long are they in school? If we have a kid who starts halfway through the year, we're only gonna get point five for them.
Correct.
Right? Um, we do have the students though that are from out of state. And for the revenues, and I believe Kelly did allude to it a little bit, we do get to collect revenues on those kiddos. We don't collect it on the state, on the Leroy's calculation of how much a district costs. We cut, we get paid based on what Iowa says that that district owes us. So it's an Iowa calculation. It's not a Minnesota calculation. And so it's different based on whatever district they come from, whether it be Riceville, Howard, Winisheek. I don't know any of the other ones. Osage maybe. But it all depends upon where they're located in the state of Iowa as well. So, and it's, it's hard when, it's harder when you have a special ed child because some special ed children, yes, they're a student of the district. But we may be sending them somewhere four hours away to get the appropriate level of education that they need. We don't get credit for that kid at all. So, and we may have to like burden some of the additional costs associated with that child, even if it's above and beyond what we would receive from the state if they were a full-time student here.
Um, there was one comment we had during the call and I wrote a note about it. We haven't collected from Riceville for two years worth of kids?
Yeah. So we're working on those collections right now.
Okay.
Howard, Winisheek.
Smack found that for us.
Yep.
Oh, Smack found that?
Yep. So, um, we are working on those collections. We, Howard, Winisheek, they are pretty up to date. They have, they, um, sent me a note the other day saying that they'll probably be paying in the new year. But we are working on the Riceville ones. There are a couple other locations that need to pay as well in relation to billing that we have sent to them. But those were the biggest.
Are you seeing a similar, uh, decline in A D M with other school districts?
Yes.
So it's, okay. I didn't realize that it was, if kids were gone because they were sick, that it affected our A D M.
Yep.
Okay.
Which is why it's called average daily membership, because they look at the number of days in which the kid is in class. There, but there, it is, it's a pretty, it's a nationwide issue. Let's put it that way. Two thousand and twenty-one was really bad. Two thousand and twenty-two kind of coming back out of it. But a lot of districts are struggling with the fact that they're losing kids because either the families have opted to a online school because COVID worked so well for them. That online schooling was great. And for others, it's just, I need to change it up because the atmosphere of the current district that we're in just doesn't meet the needs of the, or the expectations of our educational wants for our child. People are realizing that they can shop around for education and get what they want. That's great when they're younger, but not when they're older and participating in sports. So. The other positive thing though too is that we do have a two-class kindergarten. Class this year, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Okay.
Section, two section.
Two-section kindergarten classes this year, which is wonderful, which means we're seeing an increase in our kindergarten, which we only get one point oh for them, but as that grade continues to go up the ladder, right? We're gonna see that increase as soon as they hit seventh grade, eighth grade, we're gonna start seeing one point two per child um, for payment. And that will, you know, will follow them all the way through senior year. So that's a good sign that the community is, had some growth, obviously five years ago with, um, birth rates and all that bunch of jazz. And hopefully we'll continue to see that.
Any idea what it's gonna be the next year?
We'd have to ask the.
Sorry, you should have some big numbers on that.
Do you know where we are with just enrollment, not even A D M? Just, are we still hanging around the same?
Three oh, three oh three, three oh four, three oh five.
So that's about the same as it's been. Are there any other questions for Kristi? If not, we would look for a motion and a second to approve the audit.
Kristi, are you staying a little bit longer?
Well, after all of the other additional items added to the agenda, yes.
Okay.
I wasn't planning on it.
But I have a couple of questions I wanted to. We could jump to those if we, if she needs to get on the road.
I was gonna say, we can.
It's up to you guys. It's fine.
We're paying a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour. Maybe we should jump them up a little bit.
Let me see if I can remember the question, all right? And then I'll.
What? Sorry, one fifty an hour. Okay.
You can go ahead and approve the audit already.
Yep, we can approve the audit. That we can still do.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two audit.
Okay, I have a motion by Pat, a second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, for the sake of money aspect, yep, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna switch this up a little bit and we are gonna jump to, let's jump to seventeen E, board bills discussion.
Or G, G.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, E and G.
It doesn't matter.
Both of those.
Yeah, both have to do with board bills.
Yeah.
So, Deb, do you know your question? I see we can jump to treasurer's report if you want.
It's related to this.
The treasurer's report.
Okay, so we're actually gonna jump up to seventeen G, treasurer's report.
And you're looking at the one person that's.
Eleven thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, treasurer's report. Just wondering if I can get a little more, huh? I'll wait a minute. Okay. I will pause.
It's being a little finicky. I might come hover over your shoulder.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Not allowing me to open.
And so balance at the end of the month, if I'm, I'm just gonna go right across the top.
Yes.
General fund, okay? And then balance in comparison. Why would that be so dramatically different at the same time last year?
Well, first off, that's not the same time last year. That's October.
Well, I mean, it's one month. It's within a month, right?
It's all dependent upon the items that had to be spent, like the expenditures and the revenues that came in in that current month. Does that make sense? So.
I mean, but it's not gonna be that much different in a month.
It's like eight hundred thousand dollars difference.
That's a year. That's a year difference. That's, that's two thousand and twenty-one.
In October.
In October of two thousand and twenty-one.
So what would it be in October?
Last fiscal year.
Yeah, but what would it be if we're looking at October, two thousand and twenty-two?
Beginning balance, so one point four million.
All right. So it's still five, that's still five hundred.
That's because we had five hundred thousand dollars worth of checks that went out in the month of November.
Well, that's my question.
And our general fund also went down five hundred grand last year.
But that was last year. That's.
So that's different than this?
Unrelated.
Okay.
Because this is just the month of November. So if you look at the check register that was sent to you.
I did. Five hundred. I mean, we went through the check register. I'm just, I'm not doubting it. I just was like looking at it going, how could that be that? What did we have to pay out? No, I don't, I don't have my check register with me.
So remember, salaries are in there as well.
Right.
So that's a piece of it. You have salaries in front of it. I'm trying to find an actual, this check. That's out of the normal.
Right.
So we had to pay other districts in the month of November for students last year that were enrolled. So example, remember I made the example of we have special ed students who go to other districts in the state.
Right.
They send us bills.
Right.
We have to pay those.
Right.
A lot of them came in the month of November.
Right, okay. So.
And they're expensive. They're not.
Smack was one of those.
Smack was one. Onania was another.
Right. But that was like fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand.
Onania was thirteen.
Right, thirteen.
There were. We also bought air purifiers. There's one sitting right over there, which was paid with COVID money.
But that still shows, that still shows as our general fund. Okay, all right. Even though it's gonna come back in, in COVID money. All right.
We had a little bit uptick in our food service, um, revenues because we had some supplies for the Washington DC. So Washington DC did some stuff. And so that increased our food bill quite a bit, but that's fund two, not fund one.
But the wires come out of general fund though. I mean, when you look across the general fund, the disbursements, the wires would be included in that, right?
They get pushed to whatever fund that they belong to.
We don't have copies of the wires.
I will get those for you.
Okay.
But I can't get them for you right now.
Right, yeah, that was, that was one of my questions.
So we had the F F A fruit order. That falls underneath general fund as well.
Okay.
There was, that came up. Smack was fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that was large.
Right.
Which is unusual. So what ended up happening with, no, this one was, it was their first quarter payment. So we have to pay them every quarter along with their debt payment that we paid. We had our initial payment to Smith Schaefer for the audit.
Okay.
So the checks in and of themselves were two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Payroll is around one fifty-ish, depending upon the month and what's going on. So we had V I B A payments, which increase. V I B A is tied to the retirement, or the, um, the health retirement funds. So we had that. We also had a payment for a severance payment, which was roughly twenty-six to thirty thousand. I can't remember the total amount off the top of my head.
Okay.
So what ended up happening was in September, we were supposed to process V I B A wires. Because of the whole national switch.
Yep.
We pushed it into October. We tried to get them to go through and Jen can attest to this because I worked very hard to get it to happen. Nothing happened in October. They didn't go through until November.
November.
Cause there was a setup issue.
Okay, so a lot happened in November that was out of the normal. Yeah.
But I can get the wires report.
Okay, yeah, we don't have that one.
Not right now.
Yeah. That's just what I wonder because I was like, that is a dramatic difference.
There was a lot of random things that happened and a lot of it had to do with.
Last year in November, it didn't happen?
Well, no, because we were still utilizing like further and Smack, we didn't receive, we'd actually, actually didn't pay the Smack bills until the summer.
Okay.
For all of last year.
Okay.
So, um, that, we didn't see those costs last year at this time, which we normally would. Plus they have a new business manager who is definitely getting things out a lot faster.
Okay.
He's quite timely and everything. And he's quite thorough in everything that he sends, which is awesome. Way better than what we, what we were getting from past. Um, thank you, Cassidy. There's other, a lot of other random things that were happening. So we did have to do a supplemental payroll because there were some corrections to payrolls that happened in the past. We had to catch up a few bills from when we lost our A P clerk that would have been paid and didn't happen until November because we didn't have anybody. So I was trying to do it on the side and, and add it on. So we did have a lot of that happening, but I can definitely get the wires details for you and get you just a detail of everything that went off the door, all in one snapshot. So you're not looking at just checks and then just wires. You're actually looking at the whole snapshot.
And that's something else too. We want the board to know. I was gonna bring it up in my minutes, but, or my notes to all of you, but this is something you should know. I won't even bring it up again. But we are working on a different detailed report for all of you, starting next year. Like, gosh, what would they want to know? More than what you need to know per statute, more, what do you want to know also? So you're gonna see some different reports and we'll, we'll train you on reading the reports, not just you, Deb, as treasurer, but everybody. How do you read these reports? What kind of questions you should be asking, you know, like this? So, but we'll train you in those reports too, once they come. So we're kind of playing with some right now and what we think are more thorough and detailed.
Okay.
We think are more important.
And the other thing too, just to be aware, because I only attend so few meetings, is any questions ahead of time? Because I won't be here, I can at least then get the details to Jen or Erin so they can speak to them while I'm not here. Cause the game plan is to not come back until we have to present another budget to help with this whole responsibility. And the doors are always open.
Yeah.
For Tuesday.
Well, it takes time. By the time we get this and then we study it, I mean, you know, it takes time and then it's like, by the time we get this and read it and study it and then, you know, my questions don't come out sometimes until.
The downfall with the reports that you get today, so when you look at that check report, that's in your check in your report, right? It's not all of November.
Right. It's up to the sixteen, yeah.
Right? So, um, it's the sixteenth through whatever day we got this put together, right? Which would have been, I think, last Wednesday, I think was when it was done. The fifteen, whatever day, or Wednesday, Thursday. So that doesn't give you a picture of the prior month.
Mm-hmm, right.
A total picture of the prior month, which I don't think is appropriate. I think you should be looking at all of November stuff, all of it combined. Because if you look at it the way that it's looked at today, it doesn't give you the full picture.
Right, and, and we don't have the wires. So then we don't have.
Which was a piece that I didn't know you guys were actually getting until I went onto the website.
We weren't getting it?
You were getting it and I didn't know that because Tiffany would put it together.
Oh.
I wasn't a part of that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So I only knew about the check piece because she showed it to me.
Yeah.
So that's my fault that you haven't been received.
Okay.
Well, and one of the reasons we have, you know, it's never been a full month is because it's board, you know, board meeting to board meeting. The board is supposed to approve, I mean, we've got procedures and stuff in place. For the most part, the board is supposed to approve them to go out. So that's why we've always done it from, say, whatever, you know, like today is the nineteenth. So it's from whatever this meeting date is until the report's done. Cause unless it qualifies in our certain area, the checks are supposed to be held. That's why we've never had like a full, like, say, the first to the thirtieth. We go from board, you know, board meeting to board meeting because the board has to approve them to go.
Which is fine, but it doesn't help with questions like this.
Yeah.
Do you see what I mean? It doesn't help answer these types of questions when you're looking at, because the treasurer's report is based on the month.
Right.
Correct.
We don't, we don't close halfway through the month. We close up. And so that doesn't help answer these types of questions.
But we still have to get the check register, we still have to get that by this meeting so we can.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. And that was more towards my question on E, so whenever.
I'm done. I'm satisfied.
Okay. We will jump up then to seventeen E, board bill discussion.
Okay, so after September, um, you know, it's, it's been established when we look at our, um, board bill files, that when we're looking through, we've seen our Amazon account and the credit card, you know, the charges on them. So the la- and I didn't notice it until today from the past, you know, so October, November, you know, there, those aren't on there. And, you know, we, we had that discussion like a little over a year ago in a meeting because we're just trying to keep things minimal on things going sideways. And those are two things, cause everybody's got their hands on the credit card and the Amazon. So, so that was my question on board bills.
So the V I B A is in deficit right now. So there's nothing to reflect.
Okay.
Cause we haven't technically paid it because there's nothing to pay.
Okay.
Right? So we're kind of just collecting until we can make a payment.
Okay.
In the month of December, we did make an over-the-phone payment because it was due the day that we were looking at the statement. It's like, we just gotta pay it. It's two thousand dollars. It was two thousand dollars paid.
Okay.
Twenty-two sixty-three, I think, to be exact, if I remember correctly.
Sure.
But we did have to make an over-the-phone payment on the thirteenth of the month.
Okay.
Okay? That's why you haven't seen it.
Sure.
Is because there's nothing to see.
Okay.
Right now, if that makes sense?
Yep, no, that's fine. And I didn't, I didn't know. And like I say, I've been busy.
Yep.
I did not look at some of this stuff and I'm like, okay, I gotta, I gotta actually go back and click on this stuff to see if something.
And it was technically paid as a wire in December. So you'll see it in the wires report when we bring it forward. Amazon, we've made some changes to Amazon. So, um, to note about Amazon, Cassidy completed this this week, actually. They sent us a letter shortly after Tiffany left the organization, saying that they're discontinuing her line of credit. Or your phrase, that the third party associated with our line of credit was discontinuing the line of credit. Or your phrase, that the third party associated with our line of credit was discontinuing the line of credit. And they were for all customers, it didn't matter who you were, they were just discontinuing those lines of credit.
Sure.
The type of Amazon account that we had was not the most appropriate type of Amazon account because it was a feel-good Amazon account, if this makes sense? You ever heard of Amazon Smile?
Yep.
We know what Amazon Smile does.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, it sends money back to people. Well, we're a school district, we have to do it the right way. We have to have a business account, not an Amazon Smile account because that gives us next warm fuzzies in our, our tummies and we don't have that unfortunately. We don't get to do things that make us feel great all the time.
Sure.
Especially when it comes to money.
Yep.
So Cassidy has worked with Amazon to set up a new business account and to set up a new type of line of credit. It's actually invoicing, it's a thirty-day invoicing. So going forward, we will start seeing that process instead.
Sure.
And they will be also paid with a wire, but will be invoiced instead of this other random line of credit thing going on.
Sure.
And yes, I can attest that we did get the one from September paid right away and October's kind of just... It's taking a little bit longer to get through, make sure that we have all the receipts and all that stuff. Because that's the other hard piece, when you're not here every day.
Right.
Cassidy technically didn't start until the middle of November, right?
Yep.
When you're not here every day, things kind of just get thrown into piles and it's like, okay, now we gotta weed through what's what.
Yep, sure.
If that makes sense?
My stacks for Amazon, Sam's or those twelve.
Yeah, they're, so we are working through them and trying to make sure there's a better process in place. But the Amazon account was one of those that...
It was a priority.
It was a priority because they were closing the account day to day one.
Sure.
So we didn't have any choice, we had to do it. And I think the approach that we move forward with is the appropriate approach because now instead of looking like a credit card payment, it actually has an invoice number. We can actually track it, we can assign that invoice to a particular person. It isn't like, oh, this person bought these five things, but oh, by the way, it came with this other person's ten things and now we have to figure out the splits and who, what, you know what I mean?
Yep.
It's gonna be a lot cleaner.
Yep, good. No, I just thought I'd ask, but I'm glad I did because then everybody...
Right.
Understands one more false hope.
Yep.
Or, shouldn't say everybody understands, but has...
We've got the information.
There's a lot of accounts that are being reviewed right now just to see are there better ways?
Sure.
Are there different ways, right?
But the biggest thing is, is we can't turn everything to wires.
We can't turn everything to wires, but these bigger ones, it makes sense.
MS, I went through training how many times? MSBA says no, you only pay wires, you have to pay wires. Everything else should be through check, through the board and board approval.
The board still approves them.
But the wires are already gone.
No, you don't wire them until...
You don't wire them until after we give the approval?
It's a thirty-day, it's a thirty-day.
Sure.
So you wait. The only reason why the Visa was paid was because it had to get paid because they're not gonna incur late charges of fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Right, right, right.
And I've already talked to Deb to have it set up to where I will have all of the invoices input by the thirtieth. I will send her the wire report and it'll give her a couple of days to review it, to have, ask questions. And then I'm thinking on the, between the tenth and the fifteenth, I will make the wire payments.
Okay.
That way we're within that fifteen-day period and it actually is faster and it'll post to our account faster than the two to three weeks that it takes for a company to receive a check.
The other issue we've had with checks and Cassidy can attest to this is we had a company who said they didn't receive our check. And then that company changed ownership and we couldn't get ahold of anybody. We cut the check, it never cleared, but we couldn't get ahold of anybody to figure out who the heck did we cut the check to? Are you sure you didn't get the check? If you didn't get the check, then we need to put a stop payment on it and then reissue a check. And then who do we reissue it to? Because the check was made out to the original man, or the original company, not the new company. So we had some, that was like an August, July or August check that we were getting notifications on.
And I'm still getting notifications.
And we're still trying to get ahold of the company, but there's no one to get ahold of anymore because they were bought out.
I call two to three times a week.
Sure.
So, question?
Yes.
The board, in our policy, the entire board has to approve the bills before they're paid?
That is what we agreed to with the motion last year when we established how we were gonna pay bills going forward, yes.
Okay, so it's not, that's not gonna quite meet our timeline then, what?
We'll have to reevaluate the timeline and we can reevaluate the timeline if that's not...
Okay, and the, the companies will...
We'll have to work with the companies and they'll have to work with us.
Yeah.
So school districts are said that they have to pay their bills for a reasonable amount of time. A reasonable amount of time typically equates to forty-five days.
Okay. So like, you know, whoever's the treasurer, I am right now, you know, I look at it all so that when we come to the meeting, I can say I've looked at it.
And you can talk to it at meetings.
Right, and I've got my, you know, questions answered if anybody has them, but the whole board has to approve, is that correct?
And not every board operates like that, but that's how this board operates.
Okay, all right.
Let's see, there are some checks like for referees and stuff that had to be cut.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's, that's the discussion we had, I think it was la, not this last October, October twenty-one, regular meeting.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
That's where, you know, because obviously we had to pay the ref, I mean...
Right.
We have to pay the officials, we have to pay the, those people, we have to pay the utility bill.
Yeah, utility, yeah, there were certain bills that...
Any of those bills that keep the lights on and keep things moving, we have to pay them.
Right.
Right.
We can't hold on them.
Right.
Yeah, right here, brief discussion was held about financial practices related to the monthly board bills. A motion to send all regular bills, utilities, credit card, Amazon, fuels, insurance, work comp out as hand pays. Pay all local bills when they are due, pay referees between board meetings. Send weekly reports of hand pays to the treasurer and superintendent and hold all other bills unless they'll be late for the board. Motion was bade by Cassidy Milk, second pet, Arndor for all in favor, motion carries. So that's what we've still have in place.
Okay. See it, it's good you're here. Thank you for staying.
Yes, that's all I had under E, I guess, that was my question.
All the items related to...
I think so.
I think that's it.
All right, thank you Kristy.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
We are gonna hop back to fifteen E student report. I know Jenna was here, but it got kind of late, so she probably went home to do her homework. Okay, next, student services representative staff member, we have Emily Brum, school nursing professional development opportunity. That's you?
Are you still here? Thank you.
Stand wherever you're comfortable. Yes, everyone will see you.
I was just asked here tonight to share my continuing education that I've just taken in the last, I think it was this year and then one was, I think they're both. Couple of things, things that I've learned is learning about chronic and acute care guidelines here at school, taking care of students with chronic health problems such as diabetes, asthma, things that really take more time, more training for the unlicensed personnel and then letting cafeteria people, bus, van drivers, cafeteria, gym teachers, all of those people that are involved with this one student or multiple, depending on the district's need. That was just, it is very interesting to learn about how other school nurses kind of navigate through what they do for their schools specifically. The five oh four plans is something that is needed a lot of times to accommodate the, the needs of that particular student with the diagnosis. Writing individual care plans, kind of what that looks like, working, collaborating with the school social worker because mental health and physical health is just so tied in. And that has just been a huge increase over the last, I would say, since I started my school nursing and public health. The mental health is just, it's kind of, it's just really sad in schools and, and it does need a lot of attention and a lot of time. Collaborating with administration with emergency plan and implementing backpacks and Alice drills and things like that. Making sure that we have first aid supplies, that we're communicating with our first responders here in town, things like that. In case, the worst-case scenario hopefully would never happen. Training unlicensed personnel, I do teach basic CPR and, or basic first aid and CPR and AED training. And establishing, of course, good communication with our Alpha staff because I'm not here in the building every day. So Nikki and Leanne are, are great help. And so it was just, they're each continuing an education piece in, in school nursing is just learning the most effective way to do my job and to use my time wisely and use the best forms. And it's just really nice to bounce ideas off each other and say, hey, I use this and it works really well. And it kind of really can tie all of the teachers and gym teachers, all, everybody together, so we're all on the same page. So we all know specifically that particular seizure plan for that student or the diabetic plan or whatever have you, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Next we have principals report.
All right, I think it's a lot tonight, so I'll keep it short. Sometime after the new year, I'd like to take a tour, show the board kind of the, all the updates in the building. We've really been working on making the building more efficient, using all of our space, making more opportunities for our kids. We just finished up working in the fax room that was becoming kind of a place to put things and now we have classes actually checking that out and using that. So we're making sure all the ovens work, water things, up stations work, we have Culligan water up there for drinking. Cleaned it out and things like that. So really, like I said, using our spaces wisely to provide more opportunities for our kiddos. So that's kind of, I think that'd be kind of cool for you guys to see because it's really transformed, I'd say, from last spring into where we are today of utilizing all of our rooms. And I really can't think of a space that's, that's open right now. We even created space for the, somebody might have noticed the Cardinal Care Kids Hallway, it gets a little cluttered. We cleaned out, gave them space for storage, so now they're getting all the large things out of there. And we're working on moving those lifts out of that hallway because that's right by the main entrance and it shouldn't be there anyways. So two, one's a manual and one, I think, drive it, so we're working on either the shop or the bus garage to store those. We don't use those that often where we can bring them back and forth. But really, you know, making our building look really nice inside and utilizing our space the best we can. So those are some things we've been working on. So I think that'd be kind of cool and to get back sometime for you guys to take a, just a quick walk around if you'd like. Emily kind of snuck out of here, but we've been talking a little bit about now with Cake Taking Over Community Ed, maybe utilizing the mail building and maybe adding some evening classes through community ed. I know Emily's been approached by Wildwood to use her, because she's our CNA teacher, utilizing her in the mail building and doing some adult classes with that and maybe even providing some students like that could take it maybe during the day, but maybe could take evening classes. So we're trying to maybe expand on that. Emily just had to kind of get some ins and outs of how to do that through community ed and stuff through the school, so she's working on that. Some things you'll see in the new year too, I've been working on a brochure, I'm the homeless liaison for MDE, so there's some regulations and stuff I need to do for that. So I'm creating a brochure that we have as our school. So once again, we've talked a lot about advertising and promoting and, and marketing and stuff like that and I'm putting together a little brochure so there's resources for people if, if that's needed. And then some character and stuff I'm working on for the, coming back in the new year. So just working out some things that will be different, or not different, but new coming back in the new year and kind of wrapping up December and looking for a break and then starting fresh again in January, so.
Sounds good.
Any questions? Thanks guys.
Thank you, Erin. Next we have superintendent report.
All right, thanks you guys, you see my phone keep lighting up, it's the superintendents talking already about weather stuff. And I apologize for all the weather-related emails you have been getting, but tis the season. A couple of things, staff spotlight, you just saw that Chris Hansen, our food service director is our staff spotlight staff member for January and will continue to do that throughout the next coming months. Just mentioned the weather piece, boy, just continue to look at district communications as well as local media outlets. I try to get it out by six AM in the morning and most recently in the evening, we got one out, so it worked out very well there. So just kind of keep an eye on that this week again too, so that's there. It is that time of year too that, and many of you have seen many of our service organizations, not only here in our learning community, but also in our community at large, who if you are, are willing to donate food and clothing and all that, we take in all that here too for our families and our kids here within our building. So feel free to reach out to Erin or I if you'd like to do that too. All right, a couple other things here, we'll continue to have staff present. I know often we bring in our student services team for everybody to listen to them, but we want, you know, such as Nurse Brum and other people to come in and chit chat with you guys, so you can expect that to continue to happen. Let's see, Kristy mentioned this with her budget discussion, that we are starting in January. Erin and I have already started a little bit, but in January we start meeting heavily with our departments and where we're going with the budget and where we need to, again, continue to cut the fat. There's been a lot of fat that we need to continue to, to look at and make sure we're doing it correctly, so that'll happen in January. And that is every week Erin, Kristy and I meet with either each other or a member of a department to have discussions, so we'll have that. You received this in an email, but that Form A grant that you all approved at a special meeting that night for the Minnesota State High School we get a, we got a whopping two hundred and sixteen dollars for that, but it was worth the try. So that will go towards our basically general fund of our activities account, so they get that back. We are meeting regularly with community education as well, that's another department that we meet with and we had our first meeting with the staff on that and that's gonna go really well, I think. Our next meeting is early January, so that'll be fun. You did get an email from me too about Minnesota's budget surplus. I haven't received much more information on that, but once I do, I'll be sure to send that out because I really watch that closely. Again, I don't look year to year of what our budget is, I look three to five years, what it could be and where I need to move money and be ready for. So when I get that, I like to send that to the board, so you are kind of thinking in the same direction I am, so I'll send that as soon as I can. Outstanding breakfast with Santa again, many of you were there and heard just wonderful rave reviews on that as always. Again, over thirty years that has been going on, so kudos to the district and the community, that's just incredible, absolutely incredible. Our yearly fire inspection came back, we always house those reports in our district office, so if you ever want to see that, feel free, if there was ever anything negative or something, I'll put it this way, scary that the board should know about, I would surely send that out, but we always do a really good job of, you know, having a great inspection. Little things here and there such as do not plug in this coffee pot or do not do this, those are internal things that we take care of. Well, you also received this email, I am busy working on our civil rights data collection. That is a very extensive federal document that every year superintendents need to work on. As a matter of fact, there is a narrative that just came out last year that Erin also had to work on as the principal. And it's, it's a multi-form document, but we do have to have that in by the spring and frankly, I can't remember the exact date. But you'll hear more of that from me as well, the civil rights review. The superintendents are busy talking already about district calendars for next year. As you recall, the last few years, we like to come forward in February, early enough with a draft for our community. So they are aware of our discussions and that they can kind of get a general sense of what our school district calendar will look like. We usually approve, approve the formal calendar in the March agenda, so you can kind of look for that. But we have started those discussions. Let's see where else, oh, Teresa, you do this every meeting, you stole my thunder again. LED walkthrough. We had an initial walkthrough on December seventh at seven thirty AM. Erin, me, Tim Bly, Cassidy, two TRC staff walked around, again, this is just initial. Our final walkthrough will be with our entire committee and that's gonna be after holiday break because we want to make sure we get on everybody's calendar or at least squeeze as many of our community, or I'm sorry, committee, building and grounds committee members as we can. We looked, there was a couple bulbs out in the small gym at this point, principal's office, one flickering light, that's all changed now. And then Mel's room, all the bulbs were flickering, so we want that completed before the final walkthrough and then get a lot of data from our committee too, so they can see kind of what's been going on and the project at large. Let's see here, oh, this is some, some more good news, lead-in water test, outstanding results, hard to believe. I know with the, the age of the building, we were very, very concerned about this report, but our IEA, so our environmental assessment consultants come in monthly and we have monthly meetings at seven thirty AM. And, but we had them do a lead-in water test, it's due by statute, it's either every three, five or seven... It's due by statute, it's either every three, five or seven years, asbestos is in there too somewhere. But anyway, we received it back. They are going to give us the full nicer-looking copy that we can file and put on our website, but overall, we had a great report. We have nothing to worry about was the end result, so that was really nice to see. But if ever you want a copy of it, once I get it, you're welcome, welcome to have it, but it'll also be on our website.
Before you go further, I want to step back once.
Yes.
The final walkthrough with the buildings and grounds on the LED lighting, okay, you're going to do in January or February?
I'm hoping for January.
And then, is it at that time we'll see a final bill?
The bills are already here.
Okay.
The bills are here.
Okay.
But I will not pay it per se until that is done.
All right. And then, and then the bill reflected the $10,000?
Yes.
And the...
Negative.
Okay. All right, so...
And attorney fees.
And the attorney fees.
Yes.
Okay, so that's here, ready to go.
Ready to go.
And then you do the walkthrough with the buildings and grounds?
Full buildings, I hope the full...
As much as you can.
As many as I can. That's why I want it to be January, not before the holidays.
Right.
I kind of pushed off, like I think I can get more of my membership there.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was my decision to wait till January. So, hi Trevor. Okay, let's see here. So yes, so you can expect that on the website at some point too. Once I get a nicer copy, I'll also send it to the board. You can look at it at your convenience. Today, actually, we did our monthly video discussion with Axel, so that should be up by the end of the week. He'll put that out on the Facebook, YouTube pages for everybody to see. And then, let's see here. I believe... Oh, we had our concerts too, which were pretty darn awesome. If you want some, you know, happiness in your life, go to holiday concerts that kids put on. Pretty awesome, pretty awesome. My husband went to our church one. I wasn't able to go on Sunday, but he went and he came home pretty happy with that too. A lot of kids sitting around or getting tired and deciding to sit and stuff and all that. But anyway, happy holidays to all of you and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Next, we have school board committee reports. We don't have a list of it. I figured I'd give you guys the SMEC report real quick. SMEC audit was done. We as a board approved it at the end of November. We get the same thing. It was a clean audit. Everything came out okay. The unassigned fund balance is 1.5 million, which is 22%, which is actually a little bit over our set policy fund, so that was good. And also SMEC access fees, which is paid by non-member districts, has been 78,000, which goes towards the bond payment. What that means is that, say, you know, Austin or other school needs to send a student to SMEC, we charge them access fees and that will go towards the bond payment and that will help us reduce our bond payment that each district has to make.
Good.
So, are there any other board committee reports or comments?
I guess I kind of forgot. We should have added another one under recognition, so I guess I'll just do it now. Cass and Teresa are going off the board.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And with that, I'll elaborate on the award that Deb and Teresa got. Teresa has spent a lot of time getting to know everything in four years and it really amazed me that Deb did it in two. So I really think that everybody should be excited that, you know, people take the time to put into it because I've been 10-plus years and I don't have that. So, thank you. And I have one too.
Good job.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks. All right, next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the October 25th, 2022 special meeting minutes, the approval of the November 9th special meeting minutes, approval of November 30th special meeting minutes, approval of December 7th special meeting minutes, approval of December 14th special meeting minutes, also the treasures report, December bills and November wires, excuse me, December bills and November wires, November treasures report and the bank reconciliation, the budget summary, as well as student activity funds. We had no fundraisers, no donations and no personnel brought forward this month. So if there were no questions or concerns, we would look for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So we had taken the number I out.
Oh, that's right.
Letter I.
Sorry. Yep. We need to remove the treasures report, we'll approve that down below.
So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to discussion items. 17A policy, policy did not meet in the month of December, so we can move on to B, the approval of the 2224 principal master agreement for Mr. Hungerhold. Jen sent everyone, I have my email back up here, a breakdown of, of course, now my thing won't load. We started negotiations with Erin in November, or excuse me, the end of June and we were able to finish up here in beginning of December. We are bringing forward a 1.5% and a 2% increase for Erin, as well as an increase in his 403B contribution from $5,000 to $6,000 a year. There were also no language changes within the contract itself. I can't get it to load. Folks, it looked like this when I sent it to you. This is the breakdown. It's just a, you know, one page.
So 1.5 increase, first year, second year's 2% increase.
Yep.
Okay.
And then if you look at the contract I sent the board, now this won't go in his personnel file, but this is one you guys received and it's highlighted, this is any changes that I made.
Right.
So you'll see changes in dates, you'll see changes in the salary, that was in there and as Teresa said too, the 403B, so you'll see that highlighted too.
Okay, so at the bottom of this, under duration...
Sorry to bring this up, but it's in here. That, "In the event that a successor agreement is not entered in prior to the expiration date of the agreement, the principal shall be compensated according to the previous year's compensation until such a time that a successor agreement is executed." So was that reflected in this amount? Say that again?
Okay.
So you're saying, so he's living off his past salary.
Correct.
He will not get a new salary until this is approved tonight.
Correct.
Is that what you're asking?
And so like this total, no, no.
No, it should be.
But this total right here?
Yes.
Is that reflective of the fact that...
I see what you're asking.
So five months, he's going to be paid what he was paid last year.
Oh, so Teresa, you're asking the, is it retroactive?
Yeah, so basically if you take the one...
Because it's that contract.
If you take the one...
But it's not.
If you take the 119, 260, 250 divided by 12 months, because everyone gets paid in 12 months.
12 months.
It should only be paid at seven months, not the full 12 months.
Which is what you're looking?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm sorry to have to bring this up, but it's here in the policy or in the, in the, I mean, I read it, so it's here in the contract.
So...
Right?
So you're asking if we should break down that amount differently for the first contract year?
Because there's seven months left.
Right.
Not 12.
Right.
So really, the 119 should be divided by 12.
So it's not retroactive.
And then it should only be...
Teacher's contract is retroactive.
No, it is retroactive.
No, it doesn't say, it says, "In the event this successor agreement is not entered into prior to the expiration date, the principal shall be compensated according to the previous year's compensation until such a time that the successor's agreement is executed."
Okay, then if the principal desires to modify or amend this agreement commencing on July 1st, he shall give written notice intent no later than May 1st. We didn't get, I mean, even for this contract, we didn't get intent till after May 1st. And instead of notice is not timely served, the school's board shall not be required to negotiate any terms of employment for the following year unless mutually agreed upon, which we did.
So what's the wording like in the teacher's contract? Because we've many times negotiated after the contract was...
Theirs does have the language in it.
It's always retroactive.
Theirs has the language in it.
Theirs has language in it, babe.
I mean, I don't know. I just read that and I'm like, what does that, what is that saying?
Do I have a calculator on here anywhere?
Well, that's what, that's essentially what it says, is if you don't have your contract figured out, you're paid off last year's until...
Until...
I read a calculator.
Previous year's compensation until such a time that a successor agreement is executed.
Right.
So is that saying?
I don't know for sure.
It's saying he's getting paid just based off a former contract.
Right.
You know, it's not like we're not going to pay him, I think is what it's saying.
And I guess my question is, is when I sent the email at the beginning of the month saying we need to do this because the contract doesn't take effect, I don't know. Something doesn't seem right.
You can probably, you can probably read that language two ways.
Right.
When the contract is approved, then the new contract runs from June 1st this year till, or I'm sorry, July 1st this year.
Legally, the contract doesn't take effect until the board approves it, which would be today.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know. That's what the line says. I don't know.
The teacher, yeah, the other contracts are different language. I don't have it, I mean, we'd have to look.
I mean, if we don't want it to be that way, if we want it to be less ambiguous, we should change that.
Well, and it says here, you know, "Nothing of this agreement shall be construed to obligate the school district to continue or discontinue existing or past practices." So I guess we can make the decision. If you look down more when it says effect.
I mean, I feel like I want to change that if that's, if it's that, it's, I don't think it's very clear. It's...
No, because you'd have two offsetting things. You'd have that clause plus then you'd have the dollar amount right there, which everybody would just, any businessman, you would look at the dollar amount and divide by 12, you know.
Right.
So if you don't have it spelled out as such, so how do we...
I don't know. I don't know. This agreement constitutes a full...
What's past practice?
I have no idea.
Well, the last contract...
Based on my previous time on the board.
But the last con...
Has there been other times?
The last contract was not approved until the October meeting, but the last contract had dated back to July 1, which was not correct. It also was not signed by the previous chair. You signed it sometime last year and none of us knew. So I don't know how it was done before that because, because if, I mean, if it was backdated, I mean, the board didn't approve it until October, but it was backdated July 1.
You can't do that.
That's not even correct.
Yeah, that was...
But the dates were your handwriting.
That was for business management stuff.
Any agreement is that way. When it's approved, it's...
I emailed that to everybody.
Well, I think we should clean that up on here or, I mean, it doesn't, I don't, maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but that's...
I, that's, that was my understanding, because when I emailed the group and said, you know, we're at five months now, we need to get this done because the contract doesn't take effect until, you know, the board approves it. That was my understanding. That's why I said we need to get this done. I mean, Erin's, you know, we need to get this done for him. So that was my understanding, that this didn't take effect until we approved it. And there was no retroactive. And I double-checked that with MSBA. MSBA said it too, there is no retroactive back pay. There is for the teachers, but not for this.
Okay.
I think we could, I could make some phone calls to legal and ask them to look for the district and give an opinion.
We could have that language, you know, cleaned up and approve it. You know, if we want to make it retroactive, we can prove it out of the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, don't you, don't you feel that that language should be...
It should say retroactive. It just, it doesn't make sense that it doesn't.
It says, "Shall be compensated according to the previous year's compensation until such a time the successor agreement is executed."
Yes, until this new one.
Right.
Yeah. So you could even put the word retro pay in parentheses or something.
Or you'd have to negotiate it, a separate clause.
You'd have to bring it back to negotiators. Negotiators will have to negotiate it back in.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about, that can go both ways. If, if there's obvious reasons for it taking longer, you know, you might agree to the retro pay. If, if it's taking longer for whatever reason, then would that be fair for the district? So do we need to, if we're gonna, if we're gonna consider retro pay on all this stuff, we actually got to start looking at, when do we got to start negotiating?
Well, it says here, unless...
So then you just don't have the problem.
Yeah.
It says, yeah, "Unless otherwise, mutually agreed to, parties shall not commence negotiations more than 90 days prior to the expiration date."
Okay.
So, I mean, you can start in, what, the end of April?
Yep.
May, June, even before it's done.
So you're not running into this length of time?
Yeah.
So the main question is, with that clause in there, we need to break down 2022, 23 salary with an increase differently than what it's...
Unless you all read it differently, but...
But you say it is ambiguous because I can read it two different ways. Because the date on the contract starts, I would assume, July 1st.
No.
No, it doesn't.
The contract starts the day you approve it.
The parties of...
Is that what it says?
No, it doesn't start until you have to approve the contract in order for it to start.
I don't have it with me, so what does the first page say?
Okay, agreements in this, entering into between ISD 499 and Erin. There are no dates there.
No, I don't see them. I thought, I thought the date said like 22...
At the very, very top, it says 2223, 2324, Leaver, Minnesota, 55951, and then it goes into the articles.
And we're just entering into the contract tonight, right?
Correct.
We're just going to approve the contract.
We're approving the contract.
Which means it starts. So it won't be dated July 1st, it'll be dated, dated December 20th, 2022.
Because he was, we were operating under the previous one.
Yes.
So depending on what, if you want the school lawyer to answer it, she might just say that clause is in there to make sure he gets paid.
Yeah.
Otherwise, when a contract is done and there's no language in a contract, if there's no form of compensation legally, people don't have to be...
Paid at all.
Or they don't have a job. I mean, you know, there's different ways to look at that, I guess, in my opinion. So if we approve anything tonight and there needs to be changes, then that's a problem. So what's everybody thinking with this question? Just say it headache, just approve without the retro. Change it next round.
Change it, but so let's, so let's...
Because this hasn't been followed for 15 years by whatever. Just, I just approve without retro and just move on with it. We'll change it for next round and make sure we blank.
But let's, let's change it in this contract, right?
Yeah, that's what we're asking. We want to change it in your black and white, not...
I think it needs, I think we need to have legal counsel on all our contracts.
Well, I didn't know much to say about legal counsel.
Okay.
On mine, I mean...
No, but I mean, I mean, because Erin, you went from...
At this point, whatever's easier, guys, just prove it, we can change it next round.
I'm saying for the sake of the district and the employees, because there has been so many different various contracts that I've seen personally that I'm reading and there's different verbiage and different clauses. I think we need to have them reviewed. That's, that's just my opinion.
We're getting them cleaned up pretty good, don't you think?
We are, but it's been kind of back and forth for the last 10 years.
Yeah.
But do we want understanding on how contracts work? Do we want, do we want?
I mean, I, I just wanted to say at which time.
The contract would take effect or go retro or something more.
Something, yeah.
You're talking like more black and white, more to the point, more direct. Okay.
I feel like, I feel like that's, because it's not really saying, it's saying he will get paid, obviously, for the time. Principal Shelby, according to the previous years, until such time as a successor agreement is executed. So.
And if it was added to that, that, you know, that sentence.
The next sentence could say. At, at the time, once, when an agreement is reached, the pay is retroactive to the beginning of the school year or something like that.
Yeah, we can look at, and so the teachers, the teachers' contract has that in there.
Okay.
So we could always pull the verbiage from the teachers' contract and then, you know, you can always add it to this one.
Yeah.
Because I mean, the teachers' contract, that's, that's pretty ironclad. So you could always just take the verbiage from theirs when it discusses the retroactive and yet you can always add it to this one during negotiations.
Yeah.
Okay, so what would the board like to do? Aaron says he's okay with not going retroactive. Just start it from today.
Can we approve it by adding the retroactive verbiage?
It has to go back to negotiations to be approved by committee to be brought back forth again. And I have to have a right contract to sign.
Okay, well then. Can we just take, just do it how it is now? And then when we start to do a negotiation again, put that words in?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, that can happen, yes.
All right.
I'm moving through the principal contract before this year and next is written.
Okay, so the motion by Dave.
I'll second it.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have discussion and approval of superintendent goals for 22, 23. Jen sent you guys the copy of the superintendent goals. Jen and I met last, no, last week, the week before. It went through everything. We added a couple, just a couple clarification points or examples that would being, you know, data that Jen could bring forward. In the meeting, Jen, you said that, you know, everything was, you know, easy enough to do and should be able to be handled. So we would need approval for the goals to set for the school year.
And I brought up just a couple of questions, just to keep you guys in the loop. Some questions I had, for example, 2.1, engage with district members to develop a welcoming culture and positive environment that allows open communication for conversations over both positive areas and for areas of concern. I just said, is that, does that mean like parent nights or maybe I have, we do the noon Zoom again? Is that, I wondered if that was what we were talking about and she said, yeah, it's probably things like that.
And I said it too, that, you know, like, there's been a really positive response with the strategic plan that the parents have come in, they've had a say in things or opinions that, you know, they feel like they've been heard, kind of stuff like that is what we discussed.
On 2.2, under that same one, I'm sure that you meant to say thorough, provided timely and thorough?
Yes. Should have sent this to you for spell check.
Pretty sure.
Speaking of thorough.
Sorry, I can't help myself.
2.3, I asked the question, communicates and interacts appropriately with all school board members and answers questions promptly. No problem with answering questions promptly, but if I have a disagreement, you have to also be okay with that. That's part of my job to disagree with the board at times. I asked a question about increase and improve communication with updates to the school board between meetings by sending weekly updates. I'm not sure what you mean by weekly updates.
It's kind of like when you, I mean, your first year, year and a half, we were getting weekly emails and now it's kind of dropped off to like every other week.
Every other week.
I use, I can use example for me, like TRC, you know, it's been a month, we haven't heard anything. That's why I added it to the agenda. I'm thinking there's always something that can be sent.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be a book though.
Yes.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm wondering too. I'll just forward things or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. Jen, like just what Tim just said, do you want to see that one more time?
Yeah, just like, you know, when I asked about the board bill, I mean, that's, that's, we're changing things a little bit. I mean, hey, done.
But then it's whose timeline? You know, for me, I'm not ready to share with you our changes. So that's my timeline.
It just be.
You know what I'm saying?
But you could say we're working on it.
We're working on it. Here's kind of, you know, like, we're working on this, like the student services.
So we're not just in, in like a, we're not in the not know at all. We are just like, oh, we're working on.
Okay.
We're working on a better form of communication on this. Boom. You don't have to have the red, it ready to go, but.
Yep. My, I had a question on 3.2, develop and implement an internship program within the school district which recruiting of staff can occur. My question was about like certified staff, that's field experience, student teachers, things like that.
So we changed it to licensed staff. So say you've got a principal or somebody coming out of college that would say chat, you know, intern with, call it interning?
A field experience.
Okay, field experience with Aaron. It's not just, we wanted to give it more like teacher field than just staff in general.
Internship program within the school district, that's means with.
Like we have like the FFA.
Oh, oh.
Like the FFA, the one shadowing her, or say there's a.
Student teaching type experience.
Yes, or a superintendent coming out of college that, you know, works with Jen, you know, get someone else in here that way.
Yep. I had a question about 4.4. It was build trust and strengthen relationships with our little families, community members of businesses. It was just how are we going to assess that? That was my question. So something for the, the board to think about. I just, and then I asked about 5.2, continue to update the LTFM plan and coordinate with the building, grounds and safety committee as well as the school board by sending the facilities project lists every three months or so or more often as needed. And I just brought up, could the board committee also address that during our monthly meetings too? I think that would be really healthy, so. I'm not good at that too.
We added the word spreadsheet, the facility spreadsheet, that the board would get that more often.
Yep.
Or, you know, every three months or say we have a big project going on, you get it more often that way.
When are we doing this? End of the year?
You could do a soft mid-year, given that, you know, it's taken us this long to get to this point. Kind of like what we did last year, you wouldn't do a formal one that would go in Jen's file. You would just do like a soft mid-year that, you know, say, you know, we see, let me just throw one out here. You know, development, you know, implement a can to, you know, re, you know, recruit teachers that, you know, Jen could just come to the board and say, here's what I'm doing, this, this or this. Kind of like we did last year, just give the board an update. But yeah, you do a formal review at the end of the year, usually May, June.
Okay.
Is when you complete the formal one to go in the file. There are no questions. We look for a motion in a second to approve the goals for the 22, 23 school year.
Okay, I lost my, here we go. So I make that motion. Where am I at?
17Z.
Okay. Motion to approve the superintendent goals 22, 23.
I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have 17D, regular meeting minutes that were pulled from above September 20th, October 18th and November 15th minutes.
So in the past, if you read the meeting minutes, it's very, you know, it gives quite a few details. And I know we've had some staff change over there, so. I just wanted to talk about with the board, you know, I like, I like having stuff described and laid out and it's the way a lot of districts do it. Also MSBA, other places, if it's not in the minutes, it didn't happen. So sometimes the way things get set up, it's easier to understand them if we get a little more context on it in the minutes. So I just wanted the board to see how you want your minutes, I guess.
Are you going to take over the minutes?
I can. Technically, it should be the clerk's job and it's, that's, and it's, it's on MSBA as a clerk's job, so. That's up to you.
It's always been the district secretary that's done it.
I'm going to tell you right now, January, February, I won't be able to make it because I'm probably going to be having basketball games.
I guess the biggest thing for me when I saw the minutes was is this is what we have to post in the newspaper. Can our public read this and know what's going on? You know, if they don't have internet to watch the video or they didn't see it, can the public go through and read, read this and understand what we are doing as a school board?
If we have any legal questions, how is that going to be interpreted if we have to look back?
Good point.
No, Grant, I mean, Grant Meadows is a Word document, same thing. How ours used to be, well, not a Word document, but it's more a blurb on each part of the agenda. And that's how we've done it in the past, so I just want to see what everybody wants to do there. Because the meeting minutes are pretty important.
Right.
Maybe another discussion too is, we still record them, but do we post them on the website? Or on YouTube? I mean, I've heard a's and a's on that too. I mean.
But we have, I mean, we have to have minutes.
I know we have to have minutes, but at the same time, we could, we could have the same type of minutes and then if we need to refer back to that, we could still have Dylan do that? Or do you guys still want to post on YouTube or?
Well, that, I don't know how well that would hold up. Because when it comes down to it, what's in the minutes is what happened.
I'm all for doing the, the.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a thorough guy, so I'm all about preparing thorough minutes. If you guys want me to prepare the thorough minutes, that's fine.
Yep.
But I'm also having another conversation about having Dylan post that as well because if, if people have the conversation about legal stuff, we can refer to them to say, do you, do you have a chance to review the board meeting that's both posted on YouTube? That way they can somewhat answer their own questions or, you know, if they have more questions then they can obviously come in and talk to us, but that's a resource.
Yeah, it's a backup plan.
Yeah.
So how was it established in the past? How was it established that the, I mean, I've never known that the, the board secretary, this district secretary.
So it's no different than the school board runs the district, but we delegate that to Jen.
It's like the treasurer's job. You're the treasurer, but you delegate paying.
I don't do the treasury, yeah.
Yeah, you delegate the paying the bills to others.
Right.
It's the same thing.
Okay. So are you doing it this night?
Trying to.
Okay.
Never been trained in taking minutes, would like that on the record and in the minutes.
You know, because of, you know, the staffing thing, you know, it's just, is what it is. But I would, on a motion, I would say that let's, let's have the more of a comprehensive set of minutes and have it done by the, by Cassidy, whatever your title is. And, and if you're not available, then the clerk does it.
I guess we've always had the secretary do it.
But if he's not here, you have to have a backup.
What's the regular job? District secretary or being a coach?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, coach is just one thing. I mean, there could be any other, there could be any number of reasons that you aren't here.
Exactly.
That's right.
So there could be any number of reasons any one of us isn't here.
Right.
So.
I don't know how it was done in the past. Did, did she take all those notes? Or did they go back and review the video?
Both. Tiffany did both. Tiffany, Tiffany took notes and then she went back and she listened to the video to make sure she had everything correct when she was going through them.
So do we want to have, if Cass is not here, do we want the clerk to take the minutes or do we want Jen to take the minutes?
The motion is the clerk.
The clerk, okay.
It would be the clerk that takes the minutes.
Okay.
Correct. But as for typing them out, that should be the district secretary, correct?
Sure.
Absolutely, I'll do it.
Okay, but you'll, but whoever's the clerk will take the minutes if the, okay.
Okay, so I have a motion. Dave, you're going to repeat that again for me.
Then we go back to, I don't know, for lack of a better word, more comprehensive set of minutes.
Okay.
As was done in the past, done by the confidential administrative assistant. Unless he's not available to be here, then the clerk will take the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
In regards then to, then we have the procedure done. So in regards to the September 20th, October 18th and November 15th minutes, do we want to approve them as stands? Or do you want to table them to have them done the old way? Because this is what will go in the newspaper.
I think we approve them and move on.
Then we need a motion to approve the September 20th, October 18th and November 15th minutes.
I'm moving to approve those minutes.
Okay, so a motion by Dave.
I second it.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we hit the board bill discussion. Next, we have scoreboard follow-up discussion, 17F.
I was wondering what had been ordered and if the advertisement had been secured for the scoreboards.
Sorry, me?
Well, I was shooting it at Aaron, but I think, I feel like he might have.
He moved out of the way.
I feel like he might have passed it on.
Working on it.
Which part? Has it, have the, have the boards been ordered?
The boards and Cass is over there right now. Cass can attest this, that he has the invoice, I believe. I sent an email. Cass, you'd have to confirm the date on that one. And then I reached, John is the work I work with. He is the president of AIM Electronics, which I think they must have bought the electronics maybe because there was kind of a name change on it, so I'm not really positive on it. It's not a fact.
Right.
And John reached out and said, what have you, what do you want to do here? Because obviously, just like anything else, that date has moved and to pay for it. So we didn't know if we were paying for it this year, next year, and as Cass can tell you, this year, next year, well, all those years change because it's July 1st. And, you know, the year started January 1 in most people's normal lines in school districts, it's July 1st.
Right.
And stuff like that. So that terminology is all kind of flipped up all over. So Cass, not sure when I sent you that originally. I rehanded to him yesterday, like vehemently yesterday, the actual invoice because I believe we got the quote. There's two different things there.
Okay.
And I went off the quote as what it was. So we have the invoice. I'm not sure where that is set on that aspect of it. I've talked to Gary about conversations about advertising piece of it. They do three-year, $1,000 per. We don't have to follow Grant Meadow in anything we do, obviously, or any other school district for that matter. We come up with our own because there is no past practice. There is no MSBA, there is no guideline of what you have to charge. We can charge a million dollars if we want to do. And probably not getting me to go for it, but yeah. So we have to come up with a good idea of what we want to charge for these. Gary said you can lump all some of it, one, three, a thousand dollars for all of the three years. They redo it or they do it, you have to pay, buy it by three, pay every August or something, right? They use a different company. They do not go through electronics for the, for the fundraising boards. They go through a different company. Obviously, that'd be part of our payment. We're going to have to eat that cost, whatever that's going to be. So let's just say it's a hundred dollars for each side. So actually, we're only going to get 900, so you get the idea of how that would work.
Yeah.
So we just had to wait to find out what we want to do. With regards to that, I got a list from Tiffany, Tim, with regards to farmers donating. She just wrote down every farmer, I think, that's came through. Because I guess South and Mid did read that theirs. And they reached out to farmers and I am not going to sit here and say I don't know anything about farming, Pat. So you can write something about it at the end of the year, you can use this write-off. So come right to Pat on that one. I didn't know anything about that. She just gave you a list of people to reach out to and that's on top of the businesses that we would reach out to. We just wanted to see where we're at with that. We have to get the invoice through and I believe Cass has that exact number of what, whatever, that's including installation and everything, obviously, regardless of that. We have to get the invoice through, and I believe Cass has that exact number of what, whatever, that's including installation and everything, obviously, regardless of that. And then once that's done, which we're okay for, we'll just get a plan together of what we have to charge.
What's the lead time?
Well, the lead time, we can't, we will pay for it July first, and they will send it July first. This is not a, this is not a football that we were trying to get pre-ordered, this is a twenty-three thousand dollar investment, just like the lights and everything, it's not exactly a cheap conversation. So they will send it July, they're pretty good, again, I'm talking with the president himself, they'll get that up and running, they did a good job with the scoreboard, the shot clocks themselves. If you haven't been in there, look at us the way they are, they are, they're very easy to work with, so. July first is when we would pay that bill from next year, correct, Jen?
Yes.
On however that money comes out, and then we will actually pay that July first exactly, unless it's a Saturday or Sunday, obviously. And then they'll give us a time when that thing will go up.
Okay.
We want that thing up privately, obviously, prior to July, we want that to go up.
They know it said that if we ordered it, it was like six or seven months out, they must be already making what we need right now, waiting for us to pay it, then we're going to get it?
Yeah, he was pretty good about.
Or is it six months from the day we write the check?
Yeah, so we'll just bring that up, and then we'll get that.
No, we'll get it first.
And then we'll get it up.
So, yes.
But that's what I'm asking though, are they, you know, but they're already getting it going right now, so it should be here by the fall.
Yeah, absolutely, we want it installed in July, like pay for it July, install it July.
Even before preseason volleyball.
So as long as we, he's got the invoice now, so now he'll have it, that's just, you guys know all that's the information. We're good to go, we'll put that, we'll probably put on the schedule saying, hey, we paid July first, we'll be there July eighteen, I'll talk to John about that, I can email him on it, but he's, I can actually call him, he's a pretty good guy about that kind of stuff, and say.
Yeah.
So he's already had it out, here's where we would schedule you, I mean, more likely, you look at the three-day stretch like you do with the scoreboards, or the, or the time clock, or the shot clock. Very easy to deal with, and then we just have to figure out what we want to charge with that aspect of it. And then that's reoccurring in, in money back into, I guess, wherever you guys allocate that money to. If it's athletics, then that's a, it's a big-ticket item, to buy big-ticket items, if it's not, it's a lot of work coming up. Whatever you guys decide on that aspect of it, it's a good project, it's going, just had to wait for the little things.
Okay.
Hope that answers some of it.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, cool.
Next, we need to approve the November's treasurer's report and bank reconciliation. We had the discussion, we still have to approve the report.
Okay. So I make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report.
Okay, so I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Tim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Teresa, was that seventeen G?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
So the next was seventeen H, TRC update, which Jen kind of already hit in her suit goals.
I should know that, though.
Correct, so because we're so far out now, I know part of this was going to go towards last year's LTFM, part of it was going to go towards this year's LTFM.
Yep.
Are we now going to do it this year's LTFM and next year's?
Uh, da-da-da, we talked about it today briefly, didn't we?
I probably should ask that, Chris, you're just thought about that.
No, no, we talked about it today.
Okay.
So the April bill was not paid, so I have to pay that right away, that's fifty thousand dollars, and then I'm waiting until July first to pay thirty-nine thousand and change because they took the ten thousand dollars off of that, and then what I'll do is I'll invoice the TRC company what the lawyer, lawyer fees were, and then we'll do it that way.
Yes, so then we have that documentation too, because we want to make sure that.
So it's going to come out of twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four?
Thank you, yes, yes.
We already paid the lawyer fees.
Yes.
It was four twenty-seven.
Remember, it's reimbursement for that, that was our decision.
Correct.
I'll wait till July first to invoice TRC for the four twenty-seven.
There you go, yep. We wanted that separated, the same, but still separated, so we have an invoice for that.
Correct, good idea. All right, next we move on to district calendar update. We actually do have a special board meeting tomorrow night with MSBA, with Gary. Gary did email Jen and I earlier that, given the weather, he would be more than willing to meet with us on Zoom, but he doesn't want to drive down here, which I understand, that is a long way to come from St. Peter.
That's not, yeah.
Correct.
With the weather.
With the weather.
Nope.
What time was that meeting at?
Six o'clock.
That was six, we've been having them all at four, that's why, I had six.
Yeah, we were doing it before with the committee, but we opted to push it back to six since it would be just the board passing the resolution and going through everything. And also December, well, technically, December twenty-second is when break starts, the kids get out at noon, and break lasts until December, or excuse me, January second, and then January ninth is the school board meeting for the reorganization at six P.M. If there's nothing else, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Tim. Second by Dave, any discussion? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, meeting adjourned at eight sixteen P.M.